Plan with the general application bond, we have one hundred and fifty thousand for soft costs for starting the fire station building.
Okay. Would you be good with it not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand, Jamie? Or is that still too much?
I mean, I think as long as we're getting updates along the way as well, you know, and then that way we've got a chance to, I mean, if we feel like there's an issue, we've got a chance to say, hey, well, let's, let's free chat and talk about that. I think that's fine.
I do know that obviously I can provide monthly, you know, updates at this meeting as well as you have Glenn, Josh, Rick, and Kevin, that, you know, we've been meeting and will probably start meeting again almost weekly, if not bi-weekly. I think we've spent more time together than most of our families have. So, you know, we can get you, that, that information is there. If it's being shared, that might need improvement, but the, the information and the, you know, the transparency is there. I, I, a hundred percent, nobody's trying to, you know, not be tran- no, and not be transparent.
I wasn't insinuating that.
I understand.
I'm betting enough.
No, I understand.
Okay, okay.
Okay, keep moving, Doc. We have to show the person.
No, I understand. I'm just saying that there is, there is full transparency and that's obviously how we want to move the project forward. I'm just looking for a number that you're comfortable with so that we can get some work done within the next month.
I'm comfortable moving forward. I just want to know what we're spending, where and, and what it's going towards and make sure that way if we have an issue at some point in time, we can put the brakes on and say, all right, let's, let's re-talk about this. That's, that's all. And I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Can we, I may ask you to come up and answer this too, just so it's on the record, but can we work with you over the next thirty days to identify that scope and not delay the project to?
Absolutely.
We're going down this path.
Yeah, and we're going to move forward. That's part of the process. Obviously, we got to get sort of the contract and the administrative components, but in good faith, we're going to start meeting with you so we can start refining this and get you the information you need. So, okay. I will say there's a couple of pieces that you may prolong that really aren't going to impact because if, if the site that's been discussed or initially was the thoughts, it's apparently a flat site, we do need to do survey, topographic survey and boundary and other aspects of that, land survey. That doesn't necessarily, for us to do this upfront work, that doesn't, doesn't, that does not necessarily need to be done. It's always good to do some due diligence for geotechnical. That is another piece that can be done, doesn't have to be done immediately. You can kind of push that off a little bit. So there's some flexibility in terms of what we would be doing, but your main thing is you want to have enough meetings that you can have your program, you know, what are the spaces, how big it is, and some of the overall aesthetic qualities that you're looking for in the project. And so that, that's really going to get the ball moving without getting into the construction documents because that's where it takes more time and it's a little more expensive to make changes. So, so I'd be more than willing to meet with you over the next month to try to refine this.
So the new decision is, does the council want to pull the ripcord on this project tonight to cancel it all? If no, then we'll continue to proceed with DLZ and Veritas in good faith?
I believe the project will continue on.
So we won't sign a contract in the next thirty days, but we'll continue to make progress in the next thirty days. We'll try to have an updated dollar figure with what we're going to pay for out of our budget, if you will, and then what goes into the BOT contract. Is that a fair representation?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
I was not insinuating we stopped the project either.
Right, I was making sure wrong.
Okay, I'm good with this.
Okay.
Rick or Kevin, I would invite any just task force meeting, your input in the public forum before I move on to my next one, if you'd like.
Well, I think with the course of the last two, three weeks, we've had a lot of meetings, been a lot of discussions, we've spoken to a lot of different people. I think this is one project that as we've progressed through, it's had a lot of thought put to it. And it's open-minded, it's had, it's been a very open conversation, everybody's thoughts on different vendors and when it's all said and done, this is going to be a fabulous project for the city.
Yeah, I agree with what Kevin said. It's just been a long process going with the contractors, the engineer architects and but to keep you up, we don't have any figures yet. That's why we haven't been in contact, but it's all, yeah, any questions, just give me a call and I'll try to help, ask what I can, but that's, or if I get answers, I'll, I'll call and let you guys know.
Anything else on this topic? Second item, annual.
Yeah, so within your packet, you should have a, the Fire Department's twenty twenty-one annual report. Again, just a couple of brief things I want to hit on and not go through the whole thing with you. Thirteen forty-eight, so one thousand three hundred and forty-eight calls for this, for this last year, which is a record number of calls. Within the past five years, we've never had that many. So we attest that to our EMS response. We did upgrade our EMS certification level to advanced, non-transport, which means we don't take people to the hospital, we only render aid to them on scene. But myself is a paramedic and one of our other employees is an advanced DMT, do have the capabilities of making a better difference and a bigger difference in the lives of those that are suffering medical emergencies. So we as an organization decided to go ahead and make that step. With that is we make all critical calls and we've had several, not only at Honda, but also within the community cardiac arrest saves. So a gentleman in my neighborhood during the last snowstorm was shoveling snow, suffered a cardiac arrest after coming inside. We were able to successfully revive him, get him to the hospital where he was taken to the cath lab and then had a pacemaker put in and he's alive and well and working today. So we're going to recognize the efforts of those individuals during our promotion and recognition ceremony in May. So we are seeing positive, you know, positive influence with, with doing that. We retrofitted Rescue Eleven, which is one of our pickup trucks into a light rescue. Currently worth about over a hundred thousand dollars in savings on that, on that right now by doing everything in-house. So between our fire engine mechanics that we have on staff, plus just general automotive guys that work at the fire department, we're able actually to retrofit everything ourselves by just buying the parts and the pieces, doing all the installs and modifications ourself. We did come up with a five-year strategic plan that we continue to follow and we employed three car seat technicians, so they went through a week-long training class to learn how to properly put in car seats and make sure car seats are proper if vehicles are involved in, in accidents, as well as our physical fitness. So you have the wellness reimbursement that you guys supported and championed for Chief McNeely and I. And on the fire department side, I can report that all but one member received the Level Three, which is our, kind of our, our minimum status. That other individual went through some, another battery of tests and passed successfully to earn his keep on the fire engine, but the others all have surpassed that or at that level. Plus we're seeing, we got our blood work back from last year and our cholesterol levels were down, our blood pressures were down, our insulin levels were down as well. So we're actually seeing modifications, just lifestyle modifications, just not physical fitness. So I want to commend you for helping us support that project and get, and authorizing that wellness incentive that gives the guys something to look forward to and has been a very successful program. Take any questions that you may have about the annual report.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And chief?
Yep.
Ron, the naming of a private street.
So a callback, a subdivision plat came toward the planning commission and was approved. When that plat was approved, it did not have a name for a private street that's a part of it. And recently, the developer came in asking for an address for one of the parcels created in the subdivision and at that time it became apparent that we did not have a street name. Now, we have a city ordinance codified at ninety-five oh eight that functionally says, literally says, "No private road in any site, plan, plan development, or subdivision development shall be named or renamed without the approval of the common council of the city." So I'm before you this evening to get a name assigned or names. And the first sheet that I gave you, the area highlighted in gray is the private street in question. And a couple of thoughts about this and recommendations to you. So the private street is looped. Looped streets create problems. If we gave that one name, we would have two intersections of the same street with the same street. It produces confusion for the most, especially ones not familiar with community visitors to our community. It provides opportunities for duplication of addresses or opportunities for addresses similar number being on two different sections of the street. It's just messing. We've seen this other places around the city and they typically don't work out very well when you have a looped street. So the next sheet is one that I fabricated. It's my recommendation to you that north of the roundabout, we extend the Memorial Way name. That would eliminate having two intersections of the same street. I had asked the developer to recommend names for the street to you all. I didn't receive anything from them at that time, so keeping with our Veterans Way and Memorial Way block for that neighborhood, my motivation was to go with Military Drive. Certainly could be anything, but I do think we want to have two different names on this. The other possibility, there's a lot of land out there that's still undeveloped and it's conceivable that Memorial Way could continue further to the north at some time in the future. A third sheet was the proposal from the developer of Progress Road.
You, you said you didn't receive a?
I need to clarify. Yesterday I got an email from them, kind of at the eleventh hour, so that's why that one came in late. I apologize for that confusion.
Do we have any more progress in town? Progress Drive or Progress?
We have a lot of progress, Rick.
Yeah, I know that.
Either, either Military, either Military Drive or Progress are, are unique, so.
Assuming that, and I think it's probably a pretty good assumption or a thought, that Memorial Drive potentially could go farther north, I think it's the right thing to do is to keep that as Memorial. You said Memorial Way, wouldn't it be just continued north Memorial Drive?
The proper name of Memorial is Memorial Way.
I can see that that potentially could go, or the loop road would tee into it potentially.
Yes, exactly.
My personal thought is that with the naming convention that we've used out there, I might prefer at least the Military Drive.
I agree.
Motion.
I can think of a motion that is right now to the discussion point.
Was the Military Drive mentioned to the developer?
I don't think so because I haven't spoken with him. He just sent me an email yesterday with, with Progress Road.
Well, I think there might be a possibility that they might like yours better. I mean, I would, I would entertain, I, I think that you should recommend, you should say something to them. It is their, it is their property anyway. I mean, I personally like Military Drive, so, but if it had been me and I got the email, I would have said, hey, you're almost a day late and a dollar short. We were going to name that street for you and this is what, you know, the idea was.
I was a little surprised when I heard from them because we'd had this conversation three weeks ago, the first time, and I really kind of threw the Military Drive on there, not out of desperation, but to have something for you to consider.
I mean, I'm fine with you, whatever, but I'd have to pick a favor to be Military.
Kind of ties in both flights, basically, I'm sure. I have a motion that the roads be named Memorial Way and Military Drive.
Second. Motion's been made by Kevin, seconded by Darrell. Amy?
Amy?
Yes.
Darrell?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Diana?
No.
Up, thank you, Ron. Up next.
Ron, that's better than May Way.
Is that all you've been thinking about the whole time?
Yes.
Maybe we'll get that, you get that for you as a retirement gift, Ron.
There you go. I think there's a message there.
That day.
Up next, Amy, you have an update on clerk treasurer, board, state board, council audit.
Yes, so we had our state board of council audit for twenty twenty, started at the end of December and finished about the second week of March. It was pretty painless, which was nice. Couple of things that came out of it, some housekeeping, bookkeeping things, just to clean up a little bit, which we've already been working on, signatures on invoices and things like that that had been missed, small, easy changes. Another one was when we received money for COVID, we had an amount that came in and it needed to be according to the, the COVID, I think this was CARES Act, had to be put into a certain appropriation account. It all came into the bank, it was all there, it's all been reconciled, but six hundred of it, for whatever reason, was not put into that. So we, we got kind of dinged for that, but we have the money, it just wasn't put into that account by the time that all that money was supposed to be put into that general ledger account. The other thing that came out of it and has been mentioned in two thousand nineteen and when I look back also two thousand eighteen is we need to do a capital asset inventory pretty desperately. Also, I wanted to, I should have started this at the beginning. Thank you too, Rick, for being at our exit interview as a representative. That was appreciated. So the capital asset inventory was mentioned on the last three audits that we need to do to update. We had, so I reached out to a couple of different CPAs who do this for municipalities and they sent me some proposals and with the board of works agreed on one of the contracts that we will be moving forward and in about ninety days, we should have capital asset inventory done. And that includes not just vehicles and whatnot, it will include land, roads, sidewalks, a lot of stuff. So that will be nice to have. Any questions for me about any of that?
Go and find out.
You want to talk about your capital asset? Is, did you cover all of that? You've got it.
Yes, yes. Peterson, John Peterson, he's a CPA from actually La Grange, Illinois, but he has a lengthy list of municipalities and counties in Indiana that he is already working with. He, and I called and have talked to several of the people who work with them in those municipalities, Shelbyville being one of them, and they are very happy with him. And they actually hire him annually to do their inventories, but.
Anything else for Amy on that? Thanks, Amy. These two are under me, but they actually came from council in Fleetwood. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero eight is an amendment to the twenty twenty-one dash ten, the golf cart ordinance. We kind of briefly discussed this at last month's meeting. Take over.
Yeah, it was just basically cleaning up a point that was kind of left out of the first ordinance where it was really never defined as to when the annual inspection had to be, take place. We modified this modification, hesitant that all inspections have to be by June first. But I do want to change the verbiage a little bit because if you look at the UTV ordinance, number two, it says with the such annual registration being performed by the Greensburg Police Department, like that, that verbiage to the golf cart also.
Yeah, you can do that.
But, but that's just now everybody knows that you get your golf cart, you get your plate, by June first, you have to have your new sticker and have to have it inspected at the police department.
All right, I can make that addition. So if you wanted to, if you wanted to pass it on, on first reading with that, with that amendment added, I'll make sure it's added for second, or if you want to do them both, I can just make sure that's added before it gets.
And that amendment is that the police, it's done at the police department?
Yes, that, that specificity is.
You have to have two readings because there's a fine associated with it.
Right, correct.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve twenty-two, twenty dash two zero two-two dash zero eight with section one being modified, that the annual golf cart registrations must be completed by the, must be performed by the Greensburg Police Department, completed prior to June first of each calendar year.
Thank you.
Chief, you good with that? Okay. Motion's been made by Kevin, seconded by Jamie. Amy?
Okay, Jamie?
Yes.
Darrell?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero nine is the first reading to amend twenty nineteen dash forty UTV ordinance.
In that ordinance, as we learn and things, as we investigate stuff, the state allows, when we did our original ordinance, we prohibited UTVs from being on the state highways that flow through that within the city limits, but there is state ordinance, Indiana Code nine dash twenty-one dash one dash three point three that allows us to permit those type vehicles on those highways as they flow within the city limits. So this amendment is modifying the original to allow UTVs to be on the state highways that are, that flow through the city within the city limits. In addition, it adds the requirement for the annual registration to be performed by the Greensburg Police Department no later than June first of each calendar year.
I assume that we did not include the state highway language in the golf cart one ever in the past either, right? Okay, and we intend not to change that?
Correct.
Perfect. Just point of clarification. Any?
Well, and statutorily, that, that statute is designed for UTV vehicles that is for golf carts and so, and, and I, council in Fleetwood, I mean, that ordinance took my attention a lot, or that statute took my attention.
So that I'd make a motion to approve two zero two-two dash zero nine as modified.
Second. Motion's been made on first reading by Kevin, seconded by Darrell. Amy?
Amy?
Yes.
Darrell?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Perfect. Two things I have here before we get to board updates. First of all, in the last month, the Greensburg Fire Department and in turn the Greensburg Wastewater Department has responded to two separate grain bin entrapment rescues. This is something that GFD trains for and participates in. We've not had any in a few years and we had two within about a week of each other, one in Decatur County and one in far northern Jennings County that the crews responded to. In addition to that, the Greensburg Wastewater Department was called to assist with our VAC truck to remove the grain from the bins surrounding the individual that was entrapped. Both have happy endings thanks to the work of these two departments and many, many others that assisted in those rescues. Our kind of innovative component to that is using the VAC truck to help with that removal process. So there's a discussion at the nine-one-one board at our levels about how do we maybe add that into our response plan to assist those in need. Roger Linkmeyer, Matt Campbell, Bubba Wilson, James Napier, and Superintendent Smith were all on the wastewater side of those response. Of course, we appreciate the first responders at GFD who answered that call, but we saw these employees truly go above and beyond to assist the fellow man in need. So thank you, Zeke and Nate and everybody else who helped do those rescues.
Awesome, thank you.
The other update is, it was mentioned earlier, our bicentennial obviously is going on this year. The council set aside some funding to assist with tourism, facilitation of that. They have all the events on kind of a rotating calendar that's on their website. I would encourage anyone in the public to go to the Visit Greensburg website, you can follow along with the calendar of events. That was mentioned earlier, so I wanted to be sure we touched on that. And before we adjourn, we talked about this last month a little bit too, just boards and commission updates. Jamie, we'll start with you for the board of works update.
Police Chief Kane, we approved the destruction of assets for some old cages, light cars, things like that. And then we also approved, basically, there's a two thousand and ten Ford Crown Vic that they need to get rid of. We're going to give it to the fire department to do some training with and then recycle or salvage the metal afterwards. Fire Chief Kane, we promoted Corey Fisher from probationary firefighter to first-class firefighter. And we also talked about the annual report and then also the building architecture or things like that that we talked about tonight. Street Commissioner Mark Koster came for Kane and we signed or agreed to go into an interlocal agreement with the county on Park Road. City Engineer Kane, and we talked about quotes for the demolition of a property on North, four thirty North Montrour Street. We also discussed the final payout, number ten, for the city hall building, so we might, you know, we're soon to actually own it, train it, clear it out. And then the wastewater utility commitment letter for a proposed Decatur County Highway Department was approved based on their new location and offering service to them. Amy talked about the same thing she talked about tonight. And then Josh brought up basically an agreement that we signed with FERC Engineering for basically consultation on the GAS. We talked about, we approved, sorry, Richards Turf Management for maintaining Pirate Park and then we approved the lanes.
Any questions for Jamie? Out of interest of everyone's time, updates from the other boards, redevelopment, well, I guess we could go one order. Rick, do you have anything from Main Street?
I can't be told.
Fair enough. Kevin, planning commission or EDC?
Planning commission, we did have a meeting this month, but there was really nothing on the agenda. We had a training session, it was a combined training session with BZA and the planning commission in regards to the, the roles of the BZA, roles of the planning commission in line as defined by what the state expects. Took about two hours, but it was a very interesting training session.
I think that'll be, I think that'll be very help, I think that'll be very helpful and was well, it's well attended and it should be well utilized.
It's, you know, I've been on planning commission for eight years. First time I've had been involved in any formal training for the planning commission and, and learned a few things.
That's what it's for. Have I had a solid waste?
The only thing is they're up for contract renewal. So if the price doesn't change, they'll stay with Best Way, but if, if the price increases, then they'll have to bid it out. The other thing that I learned, there was, there were actually a few people from Best Way that were there and I was really shocked that what is going into recycling bins actually a little scary. There's cameras, they have cameras that see things drop in and unfortunately, these guys are spending more time out of their truck than they are in their truck because they're having to pull things out. And the thing that scared me to death was they're pulling propane tanks out. Of course, they have to pull these propane tanks out because, you know, they compact this stuff, so they have to get out. And I, I mean, I was just, just blew my mind. So I'm actually working on a Facebook Live, I'm going to do my public service announcement at some point in time, but get all my ducks in a row and just let people know that they need to be more aware of what they're putting in their. But get all my ducks in a row and just let people know that they need to be more aware of what they're putting in there.
Sure.
Their way to bludgeon customers on that, I mean, if there's.
I, I mentioned that, I mentioned that too. If, if you, if we could get them to just stop. And, you know, figure out who. It would be, it would be a little tough, because you could easily say, I didn't put that in there, somebody else threw that in there, you know what I mean? It's, it would be tough, but.
But if you keep getting constant complaints from the same.
Yeah, and, and they do, they do address those if they're issues that are like constant from the same address, they try to deal with those, but, yeah.
Okay, there you go. Anything else? Daryl, redevelopment commission?
Oh, we were told that Veterans Way is ninety-nine percent done, it may be a hundred percent done now, I don't know. But real close with that and also there is increased traffic going through Veterans Way. The stop signs are down now and there's good flow of traffic. We are seeing some, some buildings go up and some development out there too. Mainly, we are talking about right now, the, the new Tiff district, the residential housing allocation area and. Let's see, hopefully, hopefully it'll be starting on that, on, on the first house this year, right?
I would love for that to happen. I remain optimistic. Anything else?
I better be quiet now.
Couple things, the Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce has been hosting, from, from my solo reports here, the Chamber of Commerce has been hosting a lot of ribbon cuttings, hopefully you've been seeing those on Facebook if you can't attend. Some are during the day, some are in early evenings, but there's usually a Facebook Live component that Dawn does with the, the new business and has a great conversation with them. So I would encourage you to follow them, if you don't, they're also doing lunch and learns here in the building that have been incredibly well attended and cover a wide variety of topics. The Water Board signed a letter of support for the county highway garage project, very similar to the wastewater, to simply saying we have the capacity to serve them in their new location south of the airport. Second item, there is a ongoing water modeling process that's being done by HNTB to sort of give us a, a good idea of how the new plant functions in our entire system, so that we know pressures and availability and quantities, which is something I know Brian uses from an economic development standpoint as well to, to say, you know, here we can supply this and over here we can supply that. With the new plant being online and fully operational, we did that for the first time in several years. Speaking of them, we also had HNTB, Darren Berger, who is a Greensburg native obviously, lead engineer on the project, brought a crew of about fifteen or twenty down that had worked on the project over the last several years and they toured all of our facilities, but then they spent the afternoon at the water plant, went through it, went for two hours, we didn't get past the front door. So it was a really good conversation with a bunch of people that had worked on it, we hosted them here for lunch, it had a great conversation, so it was very good to show them the project and the community. I have not been to the airport board in a couple of months, so I can't give you an update on that per se, but anything else for the council? Jamie, good?
Good.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned, thanks.